All right, welcome. Welcome to Johnson Elementary School for our October 9 board meeting. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Ms. Blatter, would you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible)
All right, our first topic is communication with our host school, Johnson Elementary. Dr. Schuler, do you introduce Mr. Edwards?
I'd be happy to, so it's my pleasure to introduce Derek Edwards, who's a proud principal at Johnson Elementary School, who is gonna get us kicked off this evening with a welcome from the host school. So, thank you to the Johnson community staff for hosting us, and Mr. Edwards, it's yours.
All right, first of all, good evening, everyone. My name is Derek Edwards, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the principal of Johnson Elementary School. Now, over the years, I've worked with some of the most dedicated and talented and downright remarkable people, what I like to call my Johnson family. Our staff doesn't just educate, they inspire. They work relentlessly to nurture our students, pushing them to believe in their boundless potential. And let me tell you, potential isn't just a buzzword around here. Oh, no. Excuse me, I lost my place. Potential isn't just a buzzword around here, it's a force, it's a future waiting to unfold. The word comes from the Latin root potent, meaning to be able, and potentia, which means power. That's right, power. And if you've spent any time at Johnson, you know that we're not just shaping students, but we're unleashing their power. Now, speaking of potential unleashed, tonight, we're in for something unique. Seven of our fabulous fifth graders have channeled their energy, creativity, and vision to craft a video that showcases Johnson Elementary through their own eyes. These students didn't just put together a run-of-the-mill class project, oh no. They drove headfirst into a world of video production, capturing the spirit and soul of our students in our school in a way that left me, quite frankly, speechless. Now, I must confess, when I first watched the video, I was humbled. I was humbled by their talent, their unique perspective, and their sheer determination. It's a powerful reminder of what happens when we allow students to take the lead, when we equip them with the tools to innovate, and then we step back and witness the magic and let it unfold. This video is a testament to their creativity, resilience, and their unique way and view of Johnson Elementary School. Now, let's applaud the masterminds behind this project. Maggie Davis and Ella Pembino, your willing, your writing, production, and editing brought Johnson to life in a way words can barely capture. Yolo Perez, your keen eye for photos and video editing added a layer of magic that elevated the whole production. And to our talented photographers, Manny Garay, Matthew Vanegas, and Axel Williams, you brilliantly encapsulated the heart of our school, and you didn't just make a video, you made art. So, these seven students are shining example of what it means to be a Johnson Jaguar, passionate, creative, and unstoppable. Now, without further ado, let's get ready to be amazed by this awe-inspiring video. I assure you that you will see Johnson Elementary in a new light. So, get ready. Thanks.
(inaudible)
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 I just wanna say, I'm proud of these kids. They did all this on their own, they did not, the only support they had was from Katie Gabor and Nina Giannfrancesco, who kinda guided them to step back and let the kids take the lead, and so, they did a great job, and thank you.
Mr. Edwards, I'm seeing into the second row, do we have some of those students here with us this evening? Can we ask them to stand up and be recognized for that?
Yeah, sure. Can you stand up? Yeah. Some of the kids who were speakers, who were in the video, you can stand up too. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That was awesome, that was great to see, thank you for your work. Any board members, are there any modifications to tonight's agenda?
We have one. So, under your policy posting consent agenda, the first policy 2.260, the HR Policy Committee wants to actually spend a little bit more time with that before we bring it back for posting, so, we're gonna ask that that be moved off the agenda for tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other changes, board? All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on to public comment. We have three public people signed up for public comment tonight. I'm gonna read our typical intro, and then we'll call each one up. "Thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school district, and community. It's the board's practice not to directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and information is explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce the time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kullivitz will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I'll respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time to attend our board meeting tonight and share your thoughts and encouragement with our district." Our first speaker tonight is Casey Molitor. Is that right, Casey? Oh, there you are. Great.
I can't believe I have to follow up from that video, but I am going to try. Good evening, everyone. My name is Casey Molitor, and I am a proud member of the WWEA. This year, I am a Title I reading teacher at Johnson, and last year, I was a special education teacher. This is only my second year in D-200, but I am a long-term member of the Warrenville community. I am in a unique position of being both a Johnson teacher and a Johnson parent. Every day, my oldest daughter and I come to school where I know that everyone is doing what's best for the kids. While I see the teachers at Johnson working tirelessly to implement district-wide initiatives and hold all students accountable and to high standards, my daughter sees smiling faces, high fives, knucks in the hallways, and the occasional exchange of hugs. I see teachers who think of each other as family, collaborate, and do what's best for their students each and every day. I know my daughter is surrounded each day by administrators, teachers, and staff who both care about her academic progress and her emotional well-being. I know she is developing meaningful relationships with other students from different cultures and backgrounds. I know that if she starts to slide academically, there's a team of reading specialists, math specialists, and a special education team there to support her if she were to ever need it. Almost daily, she comes home and practices an SEL technique that she has learned from her teacher or social worker to help her regulate her emotions. She even reminds me when I should be using them as well. But it's not just my child. Every child, regardless of their need or ability at Johnson, has a team to support them and make sure that they are safe, cared for, and academically challenged during their time at Johnson. As a teacher, I also get to see how Johnson teachers and students have fun when they're not working so hard, with events such as Popcorn Fridays, Multicultural Day, holiday parties, duct taping the principals to the walls, and fun games at lunch. And finally, as a parent, I know that Johnson is the anchor of our small community. Parents are given so many opportunities to connect with other families at PT events outside of school, or at the community dinners that serve delicious food, provide much-needed items for families, and foster fellowship. Johnson is not just a school, Johnson is a family and a community that I am grateful and proud to be a part of, and I hope that the other families feel this way too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rob Cronky.
Hello, my name is Rob Cronky, I'm a Wheaton resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about two things that mean a great deal to me. First, I want to give you an update on the, from the Student Excellence Foundation. Last month, we had a sold-out fundraiser at Maple and downtown Wheaton. I'd like to thank the staff and the outstanding, for the outstanding event, and to the community members that came out to support the foundation. To date, we've handed out over 15 fellows this year, and classroom grant applications, are due in two days, and we will be going over those next month and giving out grants later this year. We also sponsor a monthly mobile food pantry, and our next stop will be here at Johnson, November 7th, from 4:30 to 6:00. For more information, residents can go to StudentExcellenceFoundation.org. I'm also part of the referendum committee, and would like to express my gratitude not only as a resident, but as a former student and teacher at Edison Middle School. I can tell you that the district has been working for years to bring this to the community. The process has been well thought out and developed. Monroe, Franklin, and Edison have not been neglected, but they do have serious issues that require serious solutions. I'm encouraged by the number of people that have asked to help by displaying signs, offering to host coffees and neighborhood meet and greets. The website is D200yes.com, and you can fill out volunteer forms on that, and we have information and videos on the website. I would also like to thank former board presidents Andy Johnson, Barb Intihar, Jim Vroman, and Chris Crabtree for their endorsement of the presented referendum. We, the residents of District 200, have the right and responsibility to take care of our biggest asset, the students, not only of today, but the students of the next generation as well. Please get out and vote, spread the word to those around you. We're able to do so much at this moment in time. Thanks again for your time.
Our last speaker tonight is Harold Lox.
Good evening. I'm Harold Lox, I'm a resident of the district. I'm here to speak about the referendum and the tax savings. The information being presented by the districts and others claim everyone will see a property tax decrease if the referendum passes. In a few places, there's a small footnote, the decrease is only for bond and interest costs. I looked at my own tax bill and went to the district's tax calculator. My taxes would go down only $105. I currently pay $9,000 per year for schools. With the district always taxing to the max and using 3.5 inflation, if the referendum passes, my future tax increase would be $200 instead of 300 with the tax calculator. When the bonds have paid off, my taxes would actually go down $1,000 per year. Nowhere is it stated the true savings after the bonds are paid off. On August 14th, Dr. O'Keefe sent Brian Lewis of PMA an email regarding the tax calculator. It stated the following. "I think it would be wise to have both. If not, it might look like we're hiding something." That was his email. So, there was discussion about letting taxpayers know the true savings when the bonds are paid off. Instead, the district decided to hide the truth. The statement in the email was correct. The district should immediately send out information to everyone in the district and put both tax calculators on the front page of the website with the referendum information. It is time to be transparent and let the public know the truth about the tax reduction. Also, I was looking at the tax site information page, and I think it's a little confusing or incorrect. I'm gonna quote a line in there. "By responsibly paying down debt, we save taxpayers over $10 million for reducing taxes." I assume this statement is in regards to debt refinancing a few years back. Yes, it did reduce taxes because the original debt was backloaded to the last couple of years. The refinancing saved interest costs with lower interest rates, plus the debt was extended a couple of years to reduce the tax spikes. Another statement in the website, quote, says minimizing administrator expenses and focusing funding on our classrooms. This is not a correct statement. I just received data from the district regarding the taxpayers are paying the following for administrators who have retired and provide no benefits to any classroom. In the last round of retirements, we spent $230,000 in vacation and sick time, and $180,000 in bonuses. They also received $200,000 of medical benefits for five years. I believe this $1 million of medical benefits, these could be used to earmark these funds for classrooms and building updates. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment section. We're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler, any topics you'd like to report to the board?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, just a few things that I want to share with the board and the community, and embedded in these, a few thank yous that I think are important to share this evening. So, number one, a huge thank you to the staff at Wheaton North. I had a great opportunity this week to participate in Shadow a Student Day, and through that opportunity, I had a chance actually to shadow Senior Riley Baskey. Got to follow her schedule for the day, including lunch and kind of all portions of the day, but really saw firsthand an opportunity to see school through the lens of a student. Phenomenal experience, phenomenal teaching staff that I had a chance to visit, great students that I had a chance to go to lunch with, play hangman at lunch with, and just enjoy a lot of time in the building. So, I wanted to start there as a thank you. I'm gonna actually stop before I come back to the items on my list and actually ask our student ambassadors to come in and share a couple of updates from their perspective, because one of the things they're gonna end with, and I'm gonna come back to in ending my update, so, student ambassadors. I don't know who we're gonna go, who's gonna go first? Yeah, can we pull that, the student ambassador slide up, please? Thank you. Here we go, looks like South.
Hi, guys. It's an honor to be back here again with you all tonight. South has been quite busy with our activities lately. Our athletics are in full swing, and many clubs have been kicked off. Our football and volleyball teams took home wins against North, with football nearly being a shutout, no hate to our North ambassadors, of course. The South soccer team also claimed the Wheaton Cup this year, and Tiger's Boys Golf is headed to state, so clearly, our athletic teams have been performing quite well. Our volleyball team is playing their Dig Pink game tonight, which includes a silent auction that aims to raise money for breast cancer patients and treatments. Batavia High School hosted an athletic event that a junior from each sport at South attended, and the event was for the Duquesne Conference, so there were plenty of students there to share knowledge and techniques with each other. Beyond our athletic teams, our theater program just wrapped up Seussical, which was their novice play that the elementary theater schools could miss a part of their school day to come and watch. And our theater program is constantly busy as they finalized casting and began running lines for our fall play Puffs, which is inspired by Harry Potter. Tiger Theater is very excited to share this production with students, staff, and families starting opening night, November 7th. Tiger Youth and Government hits off their year with their first event at Niqua Valley High School on November 1st. And then our band, orchestra, and choir all have concerts coming up within the next two weeks, and they are also very excited to share their performances that they have been practicing since school started back up. And we cannot wait to see all the hard work our teams and clubs do put to action soon. As always, we ambassadors are excited to share another update with the board next month, and I'm happy to pass this on to Caitlin, who will be sharing more on safety surveys and staff success.
Alrighty, as a follow-up to the student survey on belonging reported on last month, Principal Campos discussed ways teachers can augment the school environment in this past institute day. She disclosed particular instances in which students felt they did not belong for teachers and staff to reflect upon and alleviate in the future. Campos is determined to develop the theme of belonging throughout the course of the school year to maximize student and staff involvement within a welcoming school environment. On the topic of safety, our school resource officer, Officer Tanzilo, presented a PowerPoint on social media safety to access classes this past week. His goal is to reduce cyberbullying or inappropriate comments online to preserve school safety and ensure students make beneficial decisions for their futures. We also ran our Alice drill to prepare students in case of an emergency, to ensure all students understand the proper protocol in a lockdown-type situation, and are able to identify rallying points. Students practiced barricading classroom doors as the building was secured. This month has been significant for student communications and various safety protocols, and we hope to continue developing the school environment in various ways. Following North's presentation, we will address the survey we conducted, but until then, I'll send it off to Max.
Can you hear me? Thank you very much for the intro. All right, so, I'm gonna start it off with our National Merit Recognition. So, the National Merit is a scholarship opportunity, which students are qualified through their scores on the PSAT. And then I just wanna call out a couple of students at South that did very well. So, Jack Mathis is currently a semifinalist, and then we'd also like to congratulate the eight commended students, Jacob Kartishov, Natalie Braun, Troy Dunlap, James Karinski, Addison Mecklenburg, Audrey Wazurk, Emily Sklenica, and our very own Caitlin Groves, sitting to my right. It's also Hispanic Heritage Month, so, I actually had the opportunity to meet with some of the leadership in our Latino Connection Club at South, and they were able to give a wonderful speech at a faculty meeting in the morning. They also decorated the hallways, and then there's LED boards in our main entrance displaying information about different Hispanic cultures. We also had the college representative visits, which many students have had the opportunity to view information panels by various colleges, both in and out of state, to get to know the admissions process, the representative, and also just receive a couple, a little bit more information on the general college experience. In fact, one of my buddies went to the Alabama one, and he was like, the admissions officer wasn't in a great mood. It was the Monday after they got upset by Vanderbilt, so, not the best impression, I guess. But anyway, and then last but not least, we have the election judges. So, the 2024 election is approaching fast, which, 26 more days, I think, if I'm counting right. Most juniors received presentations in their government class to get involved through the election judge opportunity through the DuPage County, and then many students, including myself, have signed up to serve our communities and just be a general part of the civic process. With that, I'm gonna pass it over to Wheaton North.
Okay, so, at North, we have homecoming week next week. It's a little late this year, but everyone is super excited. So, our theme this year is Tangled in the Lights. So, Spirit Week kicks off next week, so Monday, we have off of school, but students can come in in the afternoon to decorate all the hallways and like, get all the environment ready for homecoming. And then on Tuesday, it's like purple and gold, because it's like the colors of Tangled. And then, that night, we also have the Powderpuff Game, where like, the juniors and seniors face off to see who's gonna win. Then Wednesday, we have a movie night in the senior lot, which is always really fun. And then Thursday, we're doing a pickleball tournament, and then the game on Friday against Lombard North. So, students are obviously very excited for this activity. And then, we also had the, our Paws Club had the visit from the DuPage County K-9 Unit, which we have a picture of that coming up on the next slide. It was really fun for students that are a part of that club. And then our theater production Frozen Junior is opening tomorrow night, and the show's gonna go on from October 10 to October 13. So, the really cool thing about this show is that they actually have a bunch of elementary school students participating in it, and like, middle schoolers, so they kind of involved the entire community. And afterwards, they're having like, a meet and greet where you can meet Elsa and Anna, and that's gonna be really fun for the little kids. And our National Honor Society is also getting ready to host their annual badminton tournament, so that's gonna be November 7th. Students basically pick an organization to fundraise for, and then there's a costume contest between everyone, so that's gonna be fun to raise money. So, next week, we get to find out what organization the students pick to fundraise for.
The Wheaton North Girls Tennis Team also starts their conference meet tomorrow. The co-op swim team has a big meet this Saturday. The Falcon Marching Band and Color Guard are competing at Naperville Central High School this weekend, and then, the Super Fans organized a fundraiser on behalf of the Banga family, and we have a picture from our pink out game a few weeks back against Batavia on the next slide.
So, the QR code? The QR code on this slide is for like, the Frozen Junior tickets, and then the Paws Club that had the K-9 Unit, and then like Luke said, that was the pink out game where they released like, the balloons in memory of Clara Banga.
Alrighty, and then, we're gonna move on to the survey results. So, as promised in the prior meeting, both North and South conducted our survey among the high schools to assess student and staff opinions related to the timing of finals. Students were asked to fill out the survey and participating access classes over the past week, while staff were emailed by our respective principals. The student survey received over 1,000 responses and revealed a significant preference towards final exams prior to winter break, totaling over 90% of the vote. Less than 10% preferred exams after break, had no preference, or would choose another option. Moving on to the staff survey on the second slide. Staff members were given slightly more information related to overall scheduling conflicts and their additional effect on exam dates, but they also agreed by over three-quarters of the vote that final exams were more beneficial before winter break. Overall, students and staff both proved to show strong favor for final exams before rather than after winter break, but we hope the information is helpful for the calendar committee when formulating future schedules, especially for the upcoming years.
Thank you to our ambassadors both for the updates on building activities, lots going on, but also for that calendar feedback. So, I've been working with the ambassadors. We ask them to do that in front of the work that our calendar committee is doing, so just as a reminder to the board, we anticipate bringing drafts of the calendars to your November meeting. But two years into this adjustment in terms of exam, we wanted to just take a point-in-time feedback to make sure that we kind of fully anchored that. Certainly, I think as you look at the survey results and at least the feedback, it kind of interesting point, this is the last year that we have a group of students in our high school that actually experienced both. At one point early in their high school career, finals were after break. The last couple of years, obviously, they've been in front of break, and so we thought it a good opportunity to get that and kind of at least settle some directions. So, Mr. Biskin does have a calendar survey that's gonna come out to the community tomorrow. We wanted to share this set of results first, that it's a pretty short survey that only focuses on a few aspects of calendar development. Candidly, we're not asking this question to the entire community, because I think that question was most relevant to students and staff inside of the high schools, and I think if we're looking at it certainly from a student-driven perspective, it kind of anchors at least one set of decisions around the calendar. So, we're gonna ask some other questions of the community just around start, date, time, some other pieces that might impact that around the, kind of this decision of finishing before. So, some questions about Thanksgiving. committee when formulating future schedules, especially for the upcoming years.
Thank you to our ambassadors, both for the updates on building activities, lots going on, but also for that calendar feedback. So, I've been working with the ambassadors. We asked them to do that in front of the work that our calendar committee is doing. So, just as a reminder to the board, we anticipate bringing drafts of the calendars to your November meeting. But two years into this adjustment in terms of exam, we wanted to just take a point-in-time feedback to make sure that we kind of fully anchored that. Certainly, I think as you look at the survey results and at least the feedback, it kind of interesting point, this is the last year that we have a group of students in our high school that actually experienced both. At one point early in their high school career, finals were after break. The last couple of years, obviously, they've been in front of break, and so we thought it a good opportunity to get that and kind of at least settle some directions. So, Mr. Biskin does have a calendar survey that's going to come out to the community tomorrow. We wanted to share this set of results first, that it's a pretty short survey that only focuses on a few aspects of calendar development. Candidly, we're not asking this question to the entire community because I think that question was most relevant to students and staff inside of the high schools. And I think if we're looking at it certainly from a student-driven perspective, it kind of anchors at least one set of decisions around the calendar. So, we're going to ask some other questions of the community just around start date time, some other pieces that might impact that around the kind of this decision of finishing before. So, some questions about Thanksgiving, winter break, some other elements that kind of impact when you can start school and still finish that calendar piece. So, short survey, I asked the community, when you get that, please take a minute to fill that out. That will again go back to our calendar committee that will work with that information and bring you as a board a draft at your next meeting. Two other things, just on the way to the community, we do have one more referendum mailer coming out to the community. It's called a full details. Mailer, again, just includes a lot of the information. It's on our information section of the website. Board members, you do have in your green folder's a copy of that mailer. I just want to make sure you have it before it hits mailboxes here next week. I've also included for you in the middle of that mailer, just a set of talking points. So, again, that it's that just summary information from the mailer itself, but obviously, if you get asked any questions of clarification in the community about information in the mailer, I thought that set of bulleted talking points might be helpful. So, again, we anticipate that hitting mailboxes somewhere kind of early, middle of next week. We anticipate that being out. We concluded our referendum town hall sessions, as well as some joint PTA meetings that we participated in. Thank you to our middle school principals, especially that not only supported those events, but provided a lot of tours of the middle school over all of those events. I think very much appreciated in terms of being able to bring our community through there, so thank you for that. Two quick recognitions that I want to mention. We recently got a note from the Illinois Association of School Boards, letting both our Board of Education and our community know that the District 200 Board of Education did earn the Illinois Association School Board Governance Recognition Designation. Again, obviously, you get that through demonstrating consistent practices of good governance, so congratulations to the school board for that recognition. Want to mention, this evening, we were treated to a great introduction from host schools. So, Mr. Edwards, obviously being one of our principals in the district, and so Mr. Edwards and all of his colleagues will be recognized on October 25th, which is Principal Appreciation Day this year. Mr. Edwards, I see you back there. Thank you for all that you do here at Johnson, and we also thank all of our principals, tremendous asset to our community. I think every year, we recognize and celebrate the fact that we have committed principals that have served our community for a long time. Leadership matters. Leadership matters in terms of being able to see sustained and continued improvement, connectedness, the all of the work certainly highlighted in our schools this evening. Certainly, leadership is a component, so thank you. And please, everybody in the community, help me recognize our principals on October the 25th. Last week, we held our local elected officials breakfast, one, I thought it was a great opportunity to connect with a lot of our local partners. There are two items that the board is going to be approving on your consent agenda this evening that actually are updated agreements with a couple of our Park District partners that allows them to submit some grants on your behalf, our behalf. And again, that cooperation would not be possible if we didn't have the relationships we do, so thank you to our elected officials. Three more quick shout-outs. One had a community member comment on a night that our Whittier faculty recently did. They held a math and reading night where both their reading and math coaches welcomed families into the building to demonstrate some of the work we're doing through their new instructional materials, to really continue to focus on our learning acceleration work. We continue to be excited in the trajectory of outcome that we see, and again, in part, that is through good, high-quality materials that our staff are doing an incredible job of utilizing. So, thank you to the Whittier staff for planning that night. Got rave reviews, from what I've told by some parents. Want to thank Mrs. Hanson, our Executive Director of Special Education, who is in the middle of our special education engagement sessions. They did both the survey, and now we're doing a series of engagement sessions and listening sessions to get feedback on what's working, where we've got some opportunities to be better inside of our student services programs. So, thank you to Mrs. Hanson, and certainly to Mrs. Murphy, there you are, for leading and supporting those efforts. And then finally, I want to mention that at your October committee, the whole meeting, so that report that I just mentioned out of the Special Education Department will be shared with you in October, at least an update on those listening sessions and some of what we can continue to work on. And then Mrs. Murphy will also be presenting at that October meeting, an update on our school report cards. So, we anticipate, right around the end of this month, that Illinois will release school report cards. We're excited to continue to update the board and the community on the trajectory of results that we're seeing, certainly in our accelerated learning space and in our college and career readiness space. So, happy to answer any questions. I apologize for the lengthy updates, but a few things I wanted to get through this evening.
Just back to the community survey regarding the calendar, just in case people tend to overlook things, what will be the mechanism by which that is distributed? Is it going out just to the school community via newsletters, or how will that get out there?
It'll come out, so not just through newsletter, it'll come out as an email from the district, I imagine, through our electronic distribution list, so email. Mrs. Barry, did I say that correctly? Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you. We're moving on to the consent agenda. I want to read the seven items. Acceptance of gifts from Lincoln Elementary School PTA. Approval of intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Community Unit School District 200 and the Carroll Stream Park District for the renovation of Pleasant Hill Park. Approval of First Amendment to Wheaton Park District lease agreement with Community Unit School District 200. Approval to open previously closed minutes. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, September 11, 2024, regular meeting open. September 14, 2024, coffee with the board open. September 25, 2024, Committee of the Whole open. September 27, 2024, special meeting with local elected officials. An approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to May 2023, as allowable by law. Approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing nun Dr. Schuler, any updates?
No additional information, just a couple of thank yous, both for the gifts and again, what I just mentioned before. We certainly appreciate the partnership with Carroll Stream and Wheaton Park District for those two grant opportunities.
Thank you, Board. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question on the intergovernmental agreement with the Carroll Stream Park District, and I did ask this question by email, and I think John might have followed up with something similar. I just want to make sure, there's two dates in there about by which we're going to make payment to Carroll Stream Park District, and the date by which I guess the agreement ceases because they weren't able to receive funding. I just want to make sure that we're not making a contribution that we would have to get back at a later time.
Yeah, we are not. So, there's two dates in there, one to obviously reflect the grant that's being submitted immediately, and a second date that reflects the ability for them to come back if they have to submit it a second time. So, it just allows flexibility for it to be submitted in both times, but you will not be locked into a financial commitment from the board should that grant not happen.
I think those odds of grants were submitted already, and then I think-
The first one.
The first one, and then I think, I think early next year is when they, the Park District would find out.
Yep.
Any other questions, Board? Alright. Board, any motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Next action item is the policy posting consent agenda, and remember, we pulled one off at the beginning of the meeting, so there'll be three revised policies to, for approval to post tonight. Policy 5.100, policy 7.200, sorry, 7.20, and policy 7.185. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the policy posting consent Hearing nun Dr. Schuler, any update?
No additional information. These have all been three-year HR policy committee discuss there and recommended for posting tonight.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? Hearing nun, I need a board, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kulovic.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have no action items tonight, so we're going to move on to the oral reports section. We have two oral reports tonight, the first being the IASB Resolutions Report. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so Mr. Jerpy serves, will serve this year again as your representative at the IASB Delegation Assembly. Each year, the Illinois Association of School Boards puts out a series of resolutions, so these are initially proposed generally from one of their member districts to the association. There's a committee that reviews them and includes a recommendation from the committee. That's actually what will be voted on at the delegate assembly. Each individual board has an opportunity to either determine if they concur with the committee's recommendation or do not when they come to that assembly. So, generally, the board, just locally, really just needs to wrestle with if you agree or disagree with any of the recommendations from the committee. You're not taking that as any kind of official action tonight, but what we've put it on the agenda is to make sure if you have any questions that you'd like for Mr. Jerpy to gather additional information on in front of your decision in November, this is the opportunity, if there are any of them. So, don't need to necessarily talk through all of these, but just any that you have any additional question or concern about. Mr. Jerpy, anything you want to add to that from the, anything you want to add to that just from the onset?
Yeah, just a small handful of items. First of all, just from a timing perspective, if there's, if there are questions tonight, I'm going to collect those because there is a webinar with the Resolution Committee on October 31st where there will be an opportunity to get clarifying information. So, whether it's tonight or whether it's something you think of subsequently, if you can get that into my hands, I'll work to get answers back, and presumably could get some time at the committee, the whole meeting, to share any additional information. The second thing is the fourth item listed, the Faith's Law Centralized State Agency for EHRs. You may recall last year that we had some discussion around a resolution related to this that the ISB had recommended against. They didn't feel that the mechanism proposed at the time was the appropriate EHR mechanism, so I think it is positive to see that now they've got a proposal that they are recommending we support for establishing that mechanism. That's actually all I had.
I had two questions on the resolutions, just for further discussion when you have those calls. The first was on the EBF authorized charter school funding. I don't believe if the evidence-based funding is modified for charter schools, that would have any impact on evidence-based funding for our school district, but that was just one question I had on that. And then an internal question is there was a resolution on healthcare coverage essentially allowing small districts to participate in Illinois Department of Central Management Services insurance, and I know we participate in an insurance pool, and I just didn't know if that drew any districts away from ours and would have an impact for us.
Yeah, we will certainly make sure of that. I don't anticipate any, but we can make sure that Dr. O'Keefe looks at that.
So, we're not, we're not saying tonight how we feel about the, we're just posing questions. So, I guess there's one, two, three, four of them that they've recommended do not adopt, but each of the school submitting school districts have the opportunity to appeal that, and so you, we need to, not tonight, but go in the next meeting and tell you if it gets appealed, how we would want you to vote, be prepared for that in advance, right?
Correct, and also if there's any that we are particularly passionate about, where you would want me to speak to the topic on either the pro or con side, there is that opportunity to kind of lobby the delegate assembly on the floor.
Eric, I have a question. So, there are a couple of the resolutions that deal with Faith's Law, and you pointed to number four, and them coming back saying that they want to have some centralized entity responsible for EHR. In the resolutions not eligible for appeal, number three, and I think Dave brought this up last year when this was proposed, not using the CANCE system, and again, they say that they did not support CANCE as an appropriate substitute. I'm really curious why. It almost seems like we're reinventing the wheel if we already have something that can serve the same purpose, which would lead me to if we had something that, like CANCE, then number nine, which they're recommending, I guess we're not giving our opinion at this point, but I think that would factor into number nine as well.
We'll see if I can get any clarification on that.
Clarification on why we're not, or why they don't want to pursue CANCE. Thank you.
Real quick, just for the community members listening or watching, this report is available online at IASB.com, so it's available to the public to run your eyes through if you have any interest.
I think it's also posted on our agenda.
Oh, is it in the agenda?
It is, yeah.
Okay. This actual, this PDF? Okay, thank you.
There's an issue in here involving TIFs, and I will spare the group my 45-minute tutorial on TIFs. Thank you. But the simple law on TIFs is but for, but for a TIF, this would never happen. And if that is followed, then the school district is getting nothing, nor any of the other taxing bodies, unless the TIF is done and new property is developed as a result that then generates more taxes. But unfortunately, the TIF process has been badly abused essentially to enrich property sellers and developers, and that's just kind of a sore spot with me, but I'd like to take a closer look at that one before next month.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Board?
The only comment that I would just remind everybody who's either here in the room or listening, so this delegate assembly is really just our, our board's opportunity to cast a vote to indicate to the Illinois Association of School Boards how we want them to lobby. We're not changing legislation. Some of this might not ever happen, but that's, that's what this process is all about.
Yeah, agreed. Thanks, Brad.
I don't have anything specific, but just generally, I don't remember it being laid out the same way, with where they separated the do adopt and do not adopt. It was kind of mixed before, and I think it just makes it a much easier document to digest, and you know, so I don't know, there's an opportunity for feedback there, but that was, to me, a very welcome change.
Thank you. Do you have any others? Alright, our second oral report tonight is the Vision 2026 Strategic Plan and Multi-Tiered Systems of Support.
Yep, so Mrs. Murphy's making her way up to the podium. We're doing a little bit through this oral report tonight and doing a little bit of pre-work in front of your October committee, the whole discussion, so already previewed for the board that will anticipate at that meeting reviewing state report cards and some of the key metrics that are on your dashboard related to them. We've had some conversations, certainly with our team, about perhaps a modification not to one of the metrics that's on there, but how that data is displayed in a way that I think may make it a little more useful for the board and for the community, and certainly our team, to look at one of the data sources. And so, no decision to be made tonight, there's no recommendation on this, but we're just trying to lay a little bit of groundwork in front of that discussion in October because you've got a couple of pretty heavy items on that agenda, and we thought it might be helpful to do a little preview. So, Mrs. Murphy.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to have an opportunity to speak to you about work we're doing in the Ed Services Department. Tonight, I'm talking about Multi-Tiered Systems of Support, or MTSS, and how that's connected to your strategic plan. I have three guiding questions for you this evening. I'm going to start with what is multi-tiered systems of support, and how does it function in schools? Starting out here with this image, this is something that I use regularly. In fact, it's been a part of all of the Sharper Focus conversations that we've had at our buildings. I use this image all the time to remind the organization of the focus in the strategic plan that the Ed Services Department is working through. Tonight, I'm really focused on those two areas at the end, accelerating learning and balanced assessment. Those are connected to MTSS. So, this is the working definition- So this is the working definition we use in District 200 to describe multi-tiered systems of support. It is a framework for school improvement. It guides and integrates daily practices to improve outcomes for all students through a continuum of academic, social, emotional, and behavioral supports. MTSS includes multi-tiered systems of support I'm going to walk you through. So this first tier, Tier One, it's centered research-based core instruction. And this is the foundation. This all of our work has been over the last few years, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, about the instructional materials that we have secured for our staff. That has been all about supporting Tier One instruction. And really, Tier One instruction is designed to meet the need, 80% of students. They do not need other. Tier Two generally will support 5% to 15% of a school population. This is intended to be additional support for students that need it beyond just core Tier One instruction. And then Tier Three is the most intense level of intervention. This is intended for 1% to 5% of a school population. Students that receive Tier Three support have academic gaps and need targeted interventions to support. So MTSS relies heavily on data. And we're going to talk about both forms of data it relies on tonight, but those are universal screening. And we use FastBridge for that. And universal screening happens three times a year, the fall and spring. And then MTSS also requires progress monitoring. We use FastBridge for this too. Students who receive a Tier Two or Tier Three intervention also receive progress monitoring. MTSS also requires us to continuously look at data and make adjustments to meet the needs of our students. So now I'm going to work, move into how does FastBridge support the implementation of... So let's start with what is FastBridge. FastBridge is a comprehensive, research-based educational tool that we use to assess academic progress and behavioral skills. It is widely used in schools for MTSS. It is well-known for that purpose. So a part of our Vision 2026 Strategic Plan, one of those goals is balanced assessment. And when I use the term balanced assessment, I think this image really describes it well because there are lots of assessments students take, and they take them for different purposes, and they serve different purposes in a school system. So there are the state assessments. We're going to be talking about the results of those at the end of October. Those are IAR, SAT, or ACT, the access tests that our multilingual learners take. And then we have an interim assessment. Those are the tests that our students take across the school year so that we can measure progress and make sure we're supporting students with what they need to be successful. That's FastBridge. And then on the end, which is the one that's the most important to our staff, are the classroom assessments. Those are the assessments that our teachers design or come with our instructional materials. These are the assessments that guide day-to-day instruction for our staff so that they know best know how to support their students. A little history for you for a moment. Why did we switch to FastBridge? Some of you may recall, we used to have district assessments. That sat on the dashboard prior to the Vision 2026 Strategic Plan and new dashboard. We made the switch to FastBridge during the 21-22 school year, and we really made that switch because we were emerging from the pandemic, and we felt it was really important at that time period when we were so focused on knowing where our students were at and addressing disruptions of the pandemic, we needed a nationally-normed assessment. And so that was why we made that move to FastBridge. FastBridge has national norms. Millions of students across the country take FastBridge, and the results are reported out as a percentile. It is not a percentage of the, the number a student earns on that assessment. It is a percentile. This is what is reported to our parents. So three times a year, those percentiles are uploaded into ParentView, and parents have the ability to log into their ParentView account, see these are students' results. So in this example right here, you see 92, 92nd percentile. I think the best way to understand this is to think back to when you brought your children to the pediatrician, and they talked about where they compare on their height or their weight as a percentile. So in this case, someone who scored at the 92nd percentile scored better than 92% of their, you know, that, those students at the same grade level at the same point of that school year. FastBridge is essential in our system for identifying students for an intervention. When our students take this assessment, our team reviews the data. They may pick up students for an intervention. They may dismiss students for an intervention. We generally use the guidance that I listed here to determine if a student should be considered for an intervention. So if a student falls in the 10th percentile or below, they're generally a part of a Tier Three intervention. If they fall between the 11th and the 29th, they are considered for a Tier Two intervention. I use the term considered there very carefully because we want to look at multiple forms of data for a student. We don't want to just make decisions on one piece of information. I also put a note here, it may be possible a student scores in those ranges and is not in an intervention, and that would be because they are probably receiving special education services or they are just acquiring English language skills, and their time it needs to be devoted to that before we start intervening in other ways. I mentioned earlier, a key component to MTSS is progress monitoring. This was another driver for us to select FastBridge when our committee came together. Our special education staff was already using this system to do progress monitoring. And so it made sense for us to also move in this direction and use it as a universal screener. Progress monitoring, in a nutshell, is this. Students who are in an intervention are assessed weekly or bi-weekly. It's a very quick assessment. It's much, much shorter than the universal screening. And the FastBridge system, our staff input that data, and there's a graph that is created that shows student progress over time. So this is the part where I want to talk to you about our data and how it connects to your dashboard. So FastBridge does report the data for our staff in a variety of ways. We look at that data for the percent of students that were at or above the 50th percentile. It also reports out data for multi, like the tiered bands of MTSS. So at the time we started using FastBridge, there was a lot happening in the school district. First of all, we were emerging from the pandemic. We were just developing the strategic plan. We were updating the dashboard, and we were just starting to use FastBridge. So our administrative team spent a lot of time thinking through what would be the best choice for the dashboard, for the visualization. We made a decision to utilize the 50th percentile. And a lot of the reason why we made that decision at the time was in the absence of state trend data and an uncertain future of IAR. And here's another history lesson for you. I've shown this, the board this before. I've actually shown CAC this. This is the timeline of the variance in state testing. So in the middle there, 2021, 20 and 22 at the bottom is the time period I'm talking about. At that point, for state testing, we had one data set for IAR. We were really thinking that FastBridge was going to serve as that, that tool that we were going to use to report out academic outcomes at a high level. That was where our thinking was at that particular time. Because we had PARC, we had years where there wasn't testing. We had years where the students could test in the fall or the winter, not everyone. And at that time too, the state was having conversations about moving away from IAR. In fact, I sat on a committee that was giving input on it. But fast forward to 2024, we've had a stable test with IAR since 2022. So this has really led to some different thinking about FastBridge. And also, our staff has been using this tool for a number of years now, and we have a better understanding of how we use the data in our system. So that's really what I'm going to move over here to in a moment. Here's your current dashboard. I just took a screenshot of this. So this shows you how we report out math. So we do, as you remember, we do it by bands. So we have K1, we have 2.5, and 6.8. And we report out the percent of students that are at or above that 50th percentile. I am at a point right now where I'm recommending that we start to think about a visualization a little bit differently that could be more beneficial to our organization as a whole and as Board of Education members. So on the left is the 50th percentile, and so this is actually Spring 24 data. So this would be what I would be sharing with you in a couple of weeks. And this is for second through fifth grade students. And so our second through fifth grade students had, there were 68% that were at or above the 50th percentile in the spring. On the right is another visualization that we can use from FastBridge and actually is the one that is giving a complete picture of the student body and is really where we are using the data most and how we're using the data to make decisions. And so in this case, the core that I talked about, that Tier One, FastBridge says students that are within the 30th to the 99th percentile are able to learn in the classroom without extra interventions. So when you look at the spring data for second through fifth grade students, we have 82% of students that fall in that band. The 11th to 29th, which is the students we're considering for Tier Two, we have 11% of our student body that falls in that band. And then in that red, 0 to 10th percentile, where there's students that are getting Tier Three, or you have to also remember they may be getting special education or newcomers, et cetera, we have 7%. So really trying to capture the, you're getting a whole picture there with the image on the right. I also think it's very valuable to look at this data by subgroup. So again, I'm giving you the same information. This is about our multilingual learners. Same assessment, second through fifth grade, spring, math. You can see 28% of our multilingual learners are at or above the 50th percentile. Whereas on the right, when you look at the data in an organized manner around the three tiers, I think it gives a better picture and it's a better conversation for our staff to think about the whole student body and supports for multilingual learners. So if, so I'm just showing you a visualization of what this could look on the, like on the dashboard. So I would recommend calling this Health of Tier One. I put in parentheses, second through fifth grade. In this case, 82%. Again, broken out by your K1, your 2.5, your 6.8 grade bands. But then, as you know, on the dashboard, you can dial in and you can view more information. Sorry, this is a little small, but if you're looking at it on your screen when you're dialing in, it looks much bigger. But essentially, I'll walk you through what it, it does say. It has the year, and then underneath I have those three different tiers. So it gives the whole picture. So on the front tile, it would say 82%, but when you dial in, then you can see green is the 82% of students, yellow, that range 11%, and red, 7%. But then above it, there's a descriptor as well where I explain, hey, this is used for MTSS. The green represents this range of results, yellow, red. Okay, I'm going to wrap, round this out with three work projects to sit on your dashboard or your work plan this year that are directly connected to MTSS. This I'm very excited about. It's Bookworms Intensive. We have a part, we've partnered with Dr. Jamie Trudaly from the University of Delaware to engage in professional learning and implementation of Bookworms Intensive. This is a year-long partnership. We are very thankful for the board supporting our opportunity to work with our staff and work with Dr. Daily. What she has developed is going to be really outstanding for our students. She has developed more tiers of support that are directly connected to Bookworms. So we have Bookworms. That's our core instructional material. She has developed strategies and materials that sit on top of it that a classroom teacher can utilize. That's called Enhanced Core. And she guides our, our staff to use it if they have less than 80% in that green band. She has interventions that are connected to Bookworms for Tier Two and interventions connected once again to Bookworms for Tier Three. Our reading coaches and our principals spent Friday learning about this and talking all about how they're very excited that all of this connects to the core classroom and really will be great for our kids. For math at the elementary level, Dr. Moran is doing a lot of work with our math coaches and interventionists about Tier Two math interventions. Currently, our coaches have used materials they create or a variety of materials. Dr. Moran's spent a lot of time engaged in research around high-quality materials for a Tier Two, and our staff are at a point where they're going to select some to pilot and will be bringing you a recommendation this year for that. And then lastly, we know we need to address Tier Two at the middle school. And so whenever we engage in curricular work, it's quite a process where we follow all of the steps that are listed on, as bullet points right there. So it's, it's generally a multi-year process, but thorough and getting to a spot where our staff is fully engaged in decision-making. All right, thank you.
Board, any questions?
Can I just make one, one final comment before you go into the questions? I think from a board perspective, part of, part of our thought process around shifting this visualization as well, one, it aligns obviously to what Melissa just shared in terms of the work plan. Two, I think it will help to support decisions or questions you might ask around decisions on resource allocation. Because those specific work plans also tie directly to staff we have allocated in our staffing plan for reading intervention, math intervention, your coaching resource. And so seeing the data this way, I think will also help to make sure we can ask some critical questions around, what does the data show need, and then how are we aligning staff allocated for the upcoming year to that need kind of based on it? So I, I think it's helpful just in terms of understanding the work plan to see it that way. I, I think it might be a little more helpful in terms of making some resource allocation decisions.
Thank you. Board?
Can I ask a really basic question? Just want to make sure we're not mixing apples and oranges here. So the red, yellow, green, so those in the red percentile, that doesn't correlate to Tier Three, does it?
Red?
Yes.
Yes.
So all kids who score in the 0 to 10th percentile will get Tier Three intervention?
They are reviewed to receive Tier Three intervention. Our staff look at those students as a collective whole and decide if they would benefit from Tier Three. Generally, majority of those students are. There could be situations where they are receiving special education or multilingual supports. So we have to make decisions about what is the best intervention for... So we have to make decisions about what is the best intervention for them. But generally, students that score in that range are receiving a Tier 3 intervention.
And those in the yellow range, 11th to 29th percentile, would be eligible for Tier 2 intervention?
Exactly, but I wanna make sure I'm really clear on this. We look at multiple forms of data before making that decision. Because we could have students that score one time at the 20th percentile and every other data point shows they're at the 50th percentile. So, our staff look at the most recent assessment results, but then historical data to make a decision about the intervention.
These MTSSs, they're primarily focused at elementary and middle?
Correct. For FastBridge, because we use FastBridge in the K8 space. We're doing a little piloting of it actually at the early childhood level as well.
So these Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports, I get the sense that they're not individualized, but they're not, you know, they're not formula either. They're somewhat specific on what the situation is for students that are in that group?
Right. So generally, you have it. So let me give you an example. So, at K2 in reading, generally, it's focused on the decoding skills, the phonics skills. That's generally what it is. When you get into the intermediate level, they look at students' literacy as a whole and they make decisions about whether we have to intervene on comprehension or potentially it's fluency we have to intervene in. But they group students by like abilities as well to provide them with the supports that they need.
And then are they broken out? When does that happen, during that subject class?
No. We actually, this was a lot of the work, it's a good question. This was a lot of the work we did with new instructional materials. We actually did a lot of intentional thinking about interventions at the same time and with time. So, we have some, the DI block that is in Bookworms, that is the time period where students receive an intervention. And then for math, we have a 60-minute core lesson. And then we have an extra 30 minutes where students work on fluency in the classroom. But if you need a math intervention, you go to the math interventionist. That's elementary. At middle school, they have a scheduled period and it's called a lab. And that would be where they'd go to reading lab or math lab.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And then, just a question on these, somewhat related to what Angela was looking at, these breakouts of the three tiers. You know, so we're going from where we're currently measuring at the 50th percentile. And I guess, you know, what was the importance or relevance of 50th? And where I'm going is just wanting to understand, like, 30 to 99th percentile? That seems like a pretty wide range. And somebody that's at 35 is a little different than somebody that's at 90.
Exactly, we agree. I think you have to think about it as just like two different ways of using the data. So when we were deciding that that visualization would be at the 50th percentile and that's what we wanted to report out to our Board of Education, we were using that as like the metric that FastBridge said, hey, if they're at the 50th percentile, they are secure with grade-level learning with those grade-level standards. But, FastBridge is really known to be an MTSS tool. And so, when you talk about 30th to 99th percentile, those are not, the students do not have the same set of skills. In the classroom, this is what makes teaching very challenging and we support our staff with. And this is why our coaches are really important to help our staff understand how to meet the needs of a variety of students within the classroom so that they all can grow. So, I guess I'm trying to present, trying to give you a visualization of where you can see how your staff are being used and where your students are spending their time. So students that are in the 30th to 99th spend a majority of their time in core instruction only.
Are you asking just the difference between why do we use 50th percentile previously, but now we're including like that 30 to 50th percentile kind of as a part of that Tier 1?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, if I look at, the first one is math. So, if we have 68 that were at 50 and 82 are 30 to 99, that means 14% are 30 to 50. And, while I know they're in the, they're not Tier 2, it seems like students that we still should be focused on.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so the, but that's gonna be primarily your classroom teacher that's gonna focus. So the classroom teacher understanding that they've got a band of students that can do grade level, can respond to grade-level instruction, but may need some additional support inside the classroom to consistently be able to do that. Right, so teachers are not gonna not pay attention to that band. I think that's one of the things, but no, I know, I know you weren't. I'm just, important in that is to, you know, still, you're gonna understand the range. Just like on the top end, there are students near the top end of that percentile that are receiving a different kind of support, right? If they may be accessing pace instruction.
I'm also just gonna add on to it. The percentile ranges that I'm outlining for green, yellow and red, those are recommended by MTSS. That's their ranges that are pretty standard for school districts to use.
And I mean, and I like the alignment with the, you know, the core, the Tier 1 and the Tier 2, if I term that right. The other question, these percentiles, is that a national number?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I have two questions. First, just clarification, because you had called out that it's possible students may not receive an intervention because of, they receive special ed services or acquiring English language skills, but they are still included within the results irrespective, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second, a little bit along, I think where Dave was going, I had some discomfort with the breadth of that band. And part of that may be me coming up to speed with the concept, because I understand from a resource allocation perspective, the value. I think the reality, whether we intended for this or not, is that parents will look at these numbers and community will look at these numbers and look at a 30% very different than a 99%. And I know I would have a tough time with the fact if we called ourselves green, if even 100% of our students were at that 30% level. You know, we are, we are not an average district. We are a very good district and I think we'd like to be an exceptional district. And so I just worry that the, there may be a perception, real or not, that that's setting the bar a little low.
One thing I do think would be important to add to this is, I think it also aligns to the conversation that our staff would have with parents. So if they log into ParentView and, for example, a parent sees a result that says 35th percentile, I think we are having a conversation with parents about, we're able to learn in the core classroom. While that number is something that we want to be higher, we are talking about meeting your needs in the core classroom. We are not talking about additional interventions. So I think part of the reason why I'm making this recommendation is also to align to the conversations that our staff have with parents.
To that point, you know, I did a little bit of research leading into this. And I know Luminate Education provides additional reporting and that some districts share some of that richer reporting with parents. Have we given any thought as we evolve into this of sharing things like the detailed progress reports or the student-at-a-glance reports with parents as part of either teacher conferences or alongside the other reporting?
Yes. Especially, we are talking about the progress monitoring reports as we're doing this work with MTSS. That is part of our work plan with our staff. And the published reports that come with FastBridge are absolutely a conversation that we can have. We thought it was easiest to, as we were transitioning to it, to upload it the way we have been with the national percentile, but there is additional information on those reports that we can consider using with families.
Thank you very much. I think if we go down this path, I think when we have a conversation with a parent and say, your child is at, you know, that 35, and so we consider that to be, you know, in that green Tier 1 zone, being able to supplement that with the additional information, I think would lead to a richer discussion.
I just, I just wanna react to a couple of things. One, it's kind of a combination of all the comments that have happened so far is, I just wanna pivot back to the idea that this is a tool for resource allocation and that if, just because you might be in 35 doesn't mean you're ignored, right? That there's just an assessment of, like, where do we spend the resource? And so that's why I like, that's one of the things I liked about it. And so, I just wanna, I wanna kind of back away from the idea that just because you don't hit a level or because you hit a level, there's action or no action. It's more just feedback to the teacher and the staff on what we need to do and who we need to focus on, right?
Absolutely. Because our staff are still having conversations about all students. That's what MTSS is about. It's about all students, it's not just about the students that are in an intervention.
So I absolutely appreciate that, that it's looking at resource allocation. But when I look at green and think that that says that these students are solid in their skills, like 30%, I feel that isn't necessarily solid. They can kind of slip. I think the reporting of it bothers me a little because if you're saying that 82% of our students are solid in their skills, that just seems a bit of a jump when you have the, those who are from the 30 to 50% or even 50 to 70%. It just doesn't.
I'll also, I'll add one more thing for your thinking. You're also going to have another piece of data that in October, that's gonna give you another picture of how students are performing with grade-level standards, and that is IAR.
I guess, so I remember when we switched to FastBridge and there were the sections between 30 and 30 to 99%. I remember being uncomfortable at that time as well, like with kind of lumping in the 30 percenters with like those who have a solid grasp. So I just, I don't like reporting it that way. Like it just doesn't seem, and I understand for resource allocation, but on the dashboard, I don't think that's...
I think it's easy to equate it to achievement, but I don't think it's achievement. I think it's where we need intervention versus achievement.
But I think on the dashboard, it's recorded under achievement, is it not?
We can call it whatever you want. I just, maybe we need to rename it, right? Because I think it's, it's more, again, just trying to pivot back to the resource idea and who we're focused on.
Then would it be a recording of the number of students who received Tier 2 intervention and Tier 3 intervention? And not so much where they're falling in achievement?
The way I think about this is that there are many different lenses of data. And like you mentioned, we have certain metrics that tell us how we're doing compared to other districts, like the statewide testing. I have my child's FastBridge scores up on my screen right now that tell me their exact score. So I know as a parent how they're doing in all of these different areas, like sight words, nonsense words, word segmenting, all of those areas that give me that specific feedback I need to know about my child. And I think this tells us how we're doing in this structure. That I, I remember one of my first board meetings where we talked about the three tiers and being a little perplexed as well of why is it 30 to 99%? And then, really understanding that that's where children are going to benefit from grade-level instruction. Doesn't mean it's all the same. You have, you know, and especially in our math and our ELA, teachers teaching differently. So all children in that band are challenged. But I think that's just where children, if they are in that band, are gonna benefit from that classroom instruction. So I don't think, I like the way it's broken out because it tells us something that we need to know. But I don't think that tells us, that's the only thing. And I think that's kind of where we're getting a little confused is we're all looking for, what's that one number? That's the only thing we need to know and there's not gonna be one number. It's gonna be individualized data, other metrics. But to me, this tells us an important fact that we need to know of how many kids for these different groups are in that classroom instruction and how many need those extra interventions and even further extra interventions.
And I think the way Jeff answered the question, so if we were in a scenario where of this 82%, half of them were 30 to 40%, that classroom instruction's gonna look a lot different than if it's 10%. And that's where, you know, the purpose, and I think the lens of resource as opposed to achievement, which we're focused on achievement and community reaction to this. And I also think what Julie talked about, what's really important is that individual kid. And if you're, if one of your sons was in the 40% and they don't qualify for Tier 2, and I know everybody doesn't follow into this, but then what, how do you support them at home? How do you support them with other?
But I don't think it means they don't qualify. I think it means they're part of a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just, right, right, right.
That's, I mean, it's not like all or nothing. There's, it's just a data point for a conversation, right?
So, yeah, so I'm, originally I didn't like it kind of where Angela was going, but I think if we kind of take the achievement lens away and look at that resource lens and what really, what's most important is how are they learning and what happens in the classroom? This is just the report of how we're doing.
Angela's gonna say something.
Yeah, I understand there will be discussions with parents. So if my child is at 35th percentile, but I still think parents, if you see green, they're like, okay, my kid is good, I'm in the green. And yes, but, you know, I think it's just a little...
But that's what parents are getting now, so that hasn't changed. So they don't get a report that indicates right now that they're not green if they're less than 50%, right? The reporting of the, is exactly, what's on here is exactly what parents are currently getting. So there's no change in that side. We haven't artificially changed that. We're just changing how that data visualization will sit on, potentially on your dashboard, right? With the, how FastBridge categorizes that? Tell me if I'm wrong, none of that is changing.
And I think that goes back to my original dislike of kind of throwing all the 30 to 99% in that green category in the same category. Because I think there maybe could be another color we could put in between there.
And that's not District 200's decision. That is based on research and FastBridge follows that.
Thank you. Then I guess, how we wanna report it, again, it's not achievement, then it's support, correct?
It's understanding the picture of learners within your whole school and where those supports need to be.
And remember, with every metric that sits on your dashboard, there's an opportunity to provide an explanation of that metric and how it's ultimately used. So, I mean, we will certainly adjust. And again, no decision has to be made tonight. We just wanted to give you some context, at least kind of introduce conversation. You're not making this decision tonight, but we wanted to share some information and give you a chance to kind of react to it as we move forward.
I think the concern is that what a parent public could take away from this sitting on the dashboard this way is, oh, 82% of our students are, you know, high achieving, or, you know, 82% of our students have met our exceed expectations. But, I don't know if that's necessarily inaccurate, even though that's not what we're saying. I think that's what might be read into it, if that makes sense. But I have another question. Can you remind me the name of our new math curriculum?
Our staff generally call it IM, but the official name is Illustrative Math.
So, do they not have curriculum for the Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports?
No, they don't. But we have found three sets of materials we think could pair well with IM and that's what our coaches and interventionists are looking at.
Any other questions, Board?
I've been trying to process this thing all night, very confusing. So I'm gonna, so data, right? Data is, it's only useful if it's actionable, right? So I'm gonna take data and put it in two buckets for this conversation. How our teachers use data is, they use that data to modify or enhance instruction for the individual student. The data that we use on our dashboard, which is what you're proposing here, right? Is the dashboard, I'm imagining the teachers don't go into the dashboard and use that for actionable work for individual students. What goes on the dashboard is what we see, what the parents see. It lets, our actions are how we allocate funding, how we allocate resources, where we need to put emphasis. So it's two different, two different... So it's two different, two different measures. So since we're talking about what goes on the dashboard, I echo all the other comments that it's a little bit misleading. I recognize that it's, that maybe what FastBridge does. If we're going to add, break one color into three, why don't we just break it into four and have two different shades of green? One from 30 to 50 and one from 50 to 99. It seems like that'd be the simple way to do it because we're giving that information out to the public and to ourselves to decide what we're going to do. And all the other data is what the teachers are dealing with is not really on the dashboard. That's my take on it.
You're creating a color coding though that does not exist within FastBridge.
Okay, but it's our dashboard.
Okay, I'm not going to fight with you on that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to clarify.
I understand that, and I guess, so I think what's being framed, let me step back and reframe it. You got to, certainly as a governing board, you got to decide how you want to use this information. If all you care about from a dashboard perspective, and I'm not, I'm not trying to frame this negative. I'm just trying to frame it clearly is being able to clearly say, this is a percentage of kids we think are securely functioning at grade level, then don't change what you're doing. Leave exactly what you're having. If you would rather see a data visualization that helps more accurately depict, I think, a picture of performance across those kind of three MTSS pieces to help with resource allocation in that piece, then I think a different visualization is probably more useful than simply understanding what percentage of kids are functioning at the 50th percentile and above. That just, that gives you an achievement kind of secure piece. If that's more important to you from a dashboard piece, then you probably don't want to change it. We were kind of giving you another chan, another way to potentially look at it that I think aligns a little bit more with how we use it in practice to get kids into kind of appropriate intervention and to give you a sense really of what that looks like because there are some resource allocation pieces to it.
And I felt like Brad much more eloquently worded my feelings on this. And to the point of it just being data, the same data set can feed multiple metrics. And I feel like there's an opportunity here to say, from a resource allocation perspective, here is what FastBridge data tells us. And from a grade level achievement perspective, here's what FastBridge tells us. Because I do think that one is more valuable to us and the teachers. I think one will be looked at more by the community. So I just, I feel that unfortunately neither of these views paints the full picture as a single view.
Agreed.
I like the idea of enhancing our dashboard to make it more usable, communicate information better. I mean, that's my big picture.
We do have one other question slash, but as we look at these two sets of data, the language and the math, right, we have 18% that would be part of supports, tier two and tier three supports. But in math, it's 52%. So that, is that right?
Is it, is it this slide?
I'm looking at the slide 10 where we've got the, yeah, so we've got 18%.
It's all in the yellow and the red for this grade level band, yes.
And then on the math, it's much higher. It's 52%.
It is math. This is math. I think you might be looking at the MT, the multilingual visualization.
Yeah, this is, this is the same, this is the same data set. It's just for the group of students that are multilingual learners, which is, you know, 100-some students only. Yeah, it's a good question. So this is all students in that grade level band?
Oh, I missed it.
Yeah, and then this is, because right now when I report to you the FastBridge results, I report it to you also by subgroup. So you would receive the report that says 28% of multilingual learners are at the 50th percentile for math, in second through fifth grade.
Focus on resource, right? So we need more research for multilinguals in this case potentially.
It's a data point, yeah.
So are you suggesting that the subgroup could also be provided or would also be provided as a drill down on the dashboard?
We don't currently have any subgroup data on our dashboard. I report yearly to the Board of Education in October, the dashboard metrics, and I report them all by subgroup as well. So that would be the practice I would plan on using unless I got different recommendations.
And Melissa, but this subgroup here is included in this data here?
Correct. This is a good question. Yep. So this first slide are the, you know, hundreds and hundreds of second through fifth grade students that took a math. And then this next slide are the small portion of those students that are considered multilingual learners. So 100-some students out of that subset, so.
So I just want to share my opinion, since we're kind of gauging that, is I much prefer the new recommended concept than the old because it accurately reflects what MTSS is and how we work with it in the system.
I think we need to be clearer than what we're defining that metric as on the dashboard.
We have two, there's two choices. There's the old choice, which is, I've been looking at whatever, the fifth percentile data, right? And then you had the recommended new change to the three tiers. If I look at those two metrics on our dashboard and have a choice, I'll, I would 100% of the time pick the MTSS breakdown of the green, yellow, red, because it tells me where my students are.
Okay, but...
My focus is...
What strategy is that under on the dashboard then, like what is it?
I have no idea.
That's what I mean. Like what is defined as under the dashboard can't be achievement.
It says academic excellence is what I believe it says.
So it's under academic excellence, which...
Under academic excellence and then achievement.
Okay, we can put it wherever we want to put it. I'm just suggesting if I'm given these two choices for data dissemination, I prefer more detailed dissemination that more reflects accurately what MTSS is. That's my, just my opinion as one out of seven board members.
If it's defined properly, I don't think you can split up, like...
I'm not sure what properly is. This is...
So MTSS is a reflection of how many students need more support services? That's what's reflected in these numbers. But student achievement is how many students achieve at or above a certain percentile.
So are you just saying if we move it to a different section, that would resolve your issue? I'm trying to figure out what the issue is versus...
I don't think it's, I don't know that you can really move it to a different section because it's under student or academic excellence achievement. But we're defining support services, like what percentage of our students need extra support? It just seems... I do like the idea of having that 30 to 50 number and then the 50 to 90 number. Because what if we did have in a 30 to 99 percentile, 82%? What if only 10% was from 50 to 99? And there were 72% were in that lower section, that would give us information to be concerned about as well.
Can I ask a totally different question? Not about the data?
Yeah.
Kind of about the data. Just trying to understand. So, so if students do FastBridge, they're placed in either tier one, tier two, or tier three, what process do we use to communicate with parents, notify parents that, hey, we want to move your student up to two, here's why, here's why they need tier three? But I guess more importantly is if we're successful in this process and we want to move a student from three to two or two to one, maybe those parents have felt comfortable, they see the progress, they're not, they're not comfortable with the move. How do our schools, is it our schools, our teachers that have that communication with the parents? Is that something that we have kind of best practices around?
We have systems for that. So our, in fact, our students receive a permission slip to be involved in one of those interventions.
Do we ever, are we ever finding ourselves in situations where a student might be in tier three and then everything's going great and we want to move that student down to tier two or tier one?
Yes, yes.
Which would be great. That's, that's what we want to accomplish, right?
Yes. There's an educational term for that. It's called fading. So we fade away the intervention. I just want a point of clarification. All students receive tier one? Everyone receives it?
Right.
You can get, you, some students get tier two and hopefully very few receive tier three.
All right, so we don't move them from tier three to tier two, we just fade away those additional interventions. Got it.
And I think that little point is what can be a little bit confusing because 100% of kids are in tier one, but 82% are in tier one here. Like 82% are successful with tier one only. Is that...
MTSS and research says that systems generally see 80% of their student body only really needing tier one. That means the health of your system is there.
But every student is getting tier one intervention?
Correct.
Okay.
So part of this also is if this was of interest to the board, you would see more data points. I'm showing you just one for AMATH in second through fifth grade, but you would see more data points. You would see the K1 reading results or the K1 math results. You would see the middle school math results that we've really had our eye on. And you would see those percentage of students that fall in each of those tiers as well. And it, it may not always be these same results that you see just for this example.
Okay, I'm processing in my head still like that this could make it look like yellow are kids who are getting tier two intervention, but they're also getting tier one. And maybe that could be misunderstood. It seems a little more complicated to have to think through it this way.
I think it's a good conversation about MTSS that we are having. It's a complicated concept, you know?
So somewhat related question. When the FastBridge is given and say a student in the fall scores at the 32th percentile, is our expectation that they will move up percentiles or could they move down by the end of the year?
The goal is always that students' results are increasing, but we do know there is fluctuation in student results. So you could, I always say in these cases, you want to see within the same, close to the same percentile. It wouldn't be alerted if you see some variation. But the goal always is that we're seeing an increase. And that's why there's, we look at other forms of data, right? Classroom data too.
So if a student in the fall is scoring in the 31th percentile and in the spring they're scoring in the 31th percentile, does that signify a year of growth? They just kind of stayed because every student is aging?
Yeah, this is, this gets really complicated. You have to dig into the individual raw scores that show because the raw scores, this is very, the raw scores are tied to the percentile. So they may have made growth but stay at the same percentile.
Thank you.
So just to, I don't cut anyone off, but you're just presenting this as an idea?
Yes.
And we're looking for feedback from us. We could have another conversation. We could have one-on-ones, how we wanted to, you know, to break it out more. So are there any more general questions that the board might have for? Let me see, none?
Just one. Since you mentioned the concept of fading, are there metrics around fading specifically that we haven't discussed?
Our teams look at the progress monitoring data, and I mentioned those, the progress monitoring data has graphs. So it'll show if students are making the kinds of increases we would hope to see. And if they are making accelerated growth, we could talk about fading those interventions.
Which makes perfect sense at an individual level. I guess I was wondering, is there any metric that's commonly used to say, as a district, are we generally making good progress in moving students up that progression?
I think that's, would be part of that proposal. It would be continuing to monitor what that percentage of students that fall in the red range or the yellow range looks like year over year to see if that, we're moving the needle on that.
Good.
Thank you.
As we were going through this presentation, I was questioning the, some of the use of the MTSS data. And I can't really think of another way to ask the same question again, so I think I'm done.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, thank you. We are on to reports from board members. So Board, are there any other reports?
I have a report, and since we're talking about data, since we're talking about data, would the Tigers back here like to say that the score of the game last weekend?
I think that was on the agenda, so...
So for a while, it was 31-0. But at the end of the fourth...
Thank you for sharing with the board members representing the North Side what the score of the game was.
So just almost a shutout, but we'll give it to you. You did get the six.
I love our ambassadors.
Julie and I were celebrating.
I'm sure you were. All right, any other reports besides Brad?
I just had a really effusive, enthusiastic compliment of Pleasant Hill unsolicited a couple of days ago.
Oh, nice.
Very, very happy with the environment there.
Good, glad to hear it.
So I don't know if this goes here, it's not really a report, but I have heard that with the new CAC that we're going to be getting a report about kind of like what's the buzz? Like that'll be coming to all of us in terms of, you know, getting... Anyway, it led me to think that, could there be a time during our meeting where we have a what's the buzz? Like what things we've heard?
We can certainly consider it. We can consider it.
I would think that could, if something was going to be brought up, this would be the time to do it.
Well, I think I would like to have, if we're going to do something like that, it'd be probably better in the committee of the whole versus a board meeting where we're doing business. Where committee of the whole is more open discussion. So if we're, let's just think about it and figure out how we want to shape it.
So a number of events, I just want, you know, the coffee with the board I thought was good. The, you know, the elected leader breakfast and prayer breakfast were good things. The Student Excellence Foundation fundraiser that we heard about earlier, you know, they had to do a pivot because there's a new venue called The Backyard that wasn't ready. So they had to pivot, and Eric Schlickman is the owner of The Backyard and a couple other establishments. And he did a really solid for the, for the Student Excellence Foundation in terms of pivoting and getting it in at the Maypole Restaurant and really support, giving them really a good deal and helping support that fundraising for all the things they do for funding a classroom and all that. So I thought it was important to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Board members, anything else? All right, we have four written reports that are on our agenda. You can refine on the dashboard. Our monthly financials report, our Freedom of Information Act report, our board communications log, and then our CAC Citizens Advisory Committee report. Topics for future discussion, right now we have the 2024 tax levy. Are there any additional topics board members want considered for future discussion?
What tax levy going to be? Is it November?
It's in November.
Okay.
Tentative next month. You approve it in December.
Okay. Our next regular board meeting will be November 13th, 2024 at 7 o'clock at Lowell Elementary School. The next committee of the whole meeting will be on October 23rd, 2024 at 7 o'clock at the School Service Center. There be no further action to come before the board an open session. Board, any motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kulevitz. All of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Our meeting's adjourned. Thank you.